We're ready.
All right, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for February 22nd, 2023, a little after 6 o'clock. We're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Moeller.
Present.
We have all members present, we have the quorum.
Thank you. We're going to offer a prayer by Councilmember Susan Vaughn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Be over here.
We gather here this evening as members of Hamilton City Council mindful of the opportunity to render our service to our community. We seek guidance, wisdom, and support in all decisions we make. We aim to engage in meaningful discussion, and may we be challenged to give our best always. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start off with a special presentations. And our first one has to do with the Ohio water contamination. I believe we've got Tim here and Edwin. You come to the podium, introduce yourselves and kind of give us an idea of how you can educate us a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor Moeller, members of City Council, community. My name is Edwin Porter, I'm the Executive Director of Infrastructure for the City of Hamilton. So as all are aware, the City of Hamilton owns and operates our drinking water system. And our, our division of utility operations is responsible for the groundwater, you know, getting the water out of the ground and then also disinfecting the water at our two treatment plants in the city. Our division of engineering is responsible for the engineering and capital project implementation in our distribution system. And our public works team is responsible for the maintenance of our distribution system. But as, as we are aware of the chemical spill in East Palestine, Ohio, you know, we were of course aware that it occurred and understood very quickly how it could or could not affect the City of Hamilton drinking water supply. But as many city officials, I know members of City Council and were contacted by the community and they expressed their concerns about the drinking water, we felt it would be important to have a special presentation just to discuss at a high level where our drinking water source comes from, the, the monitoring of that drinking water source as well as why we're not concerned with the chemical spill contaminating our drinking water supply. So in 1967, Hamilton was a founding member of something called the Hamilton New Baltimore Groundwater Consortium. And this is a partnership that we have, and the program is designed to protect the area's source water from pollution and overuse. And with us today is Tim McLellan. Tim is the manager of the groundwater consortium and he's been with them for 22 years. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim to go through a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Edwin, and thank you, members of council and Mayor Moeller for the invite here. I'm going to jump right into this because I know I have about 10 or 15 minutes and it's going to be difficult for me because I can talk about water all night long, as Tim and Tim and everybody else up here knows. So I'm going to jump right into this, introduce you to who the groundwater consortium is. It's seven large public water suppliers and users in the Hamilton to New Baltimore, which is in northern Colrain Township area. We actually extend up into the Trenton area. We've been together for, well, actually five of the seven members have been together for 57 years before Ohio EPA, US EPA even formed. Members of the groundwater consortium include the City of Hamilton, of course, City of Fairfield, Cincinnati Water Works, Southwest Regional Water District, Butler County Water and Sewer, Molson Coors, and Southwest Ohio Water Company. Tonight, I'm going to focus on City of Hamilton and a couple aspects of our program. Basically, what is source water? It's surface water, or streams, rivers, or lakes. And in our case, groundwater aquifers that serve as drinking water in our region. Source water provides water for public drinking water supplies and private wells throughout this region. Members of the groundwater consortium pump on average about 62 million gallons of water per day from the aquifer. There's an example of one of Hamilton's wells off to the right. Drinking water protection areas, which we have established in this region across several jurisdictional boundaries. We serve over 315,000 water customers, several hundred businesses with the groundwater in this region. So it's very, very important to a lot of different companies and, and cities, Molson Coors established here because of this water source. These are all the components of our source water protection program. I wish I could get into all of these tonight, but I'm going to focus on the two that are highlighted there, groundwater monitoring, contingency planning, for the sake of what happened a couple of weeks ago up in the east part of Ohio. Obviously, everybody here has probably heard of the East Palestine Ohio train derailment. This was a tragedy in this community of about 4,500 people. This train derailment has impacted water and soils up in this area of Ohio. Tonight, I'm going to talk about currently what's happening there. I'm not going to get into all of the details because I know a lot of people have heard on the news what's happening. They have tested the water in that community, all five production wells that they have that are groundwater wells up there. So far, things are non-detect. It's only been two weeks from this contamination incident. So there's that possibility that that contamination could get down into their drinking water wells in time. Let's hope it doesn't. Everything has been non-detect up to this point. Doesn't mean that the private wells and the private well owners in that region have non-detections. They have to sample their water on their own. They'll probably be reimbursed by the railroad company for those tests. Basically, they're currently excavating contaminated soil. I heard the other day on the news, it was over 3,500 cubic yards of contaminated soil they've removed. What this does is minimize groundwater impact by removing that contaminated soil so that over time when there's precipitation, it doesn't carry that contamination down into the water table. They'll be installing wells, they haven't announced that, but I'm certain they'll be installing wells for a long-term monitoring period for the next likely decade or more. So one of the things I was a little frustrated with over the past couple of weeks is the misleading information on a lot of social media outlets, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok. I almost had to like stop looking at that stuff, but I couldn't help it because people were sending me messages. This is a pretty well-known map at this point in time. This was a map that was used to provide misleading information. For example, on the left, this was a tweet by somebody saying, "East Palestine sits almost at the very beginning of the Ohio River Basin aquifer." That is not an aquifer. That would be the largest aquifer in the country if that weren't actually an aquifer. That's an actual drainage basin for the Ohio River. So that's the first thing that popped out to me. A lot of people didn't really pay attention to that particular tweet in terms of what it meant to me. But on the right, the yellow shaded area, somebody wrote that if you live in that yellow shaded area, don't drink the water, don't risk it. So it confused a lot of people in the state of Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana. Every single consortium member had phone calls. A lot of council people and mayors had a lot of questions to address. And obviously, a lot of you have heard about Cincinnati Water Works and the work that they've done on the Ohio River to minimize the risk to their water customers. So in fact, this is the river drainage basin for the Ohio River. This area is where all the water in the green area drains to. So the Ohio River is the lowest elevation in that region. So any water that's draining into creeks, rivers, and streams ultimately will end up in that, on that blue line, which is the Ohio River. One of the other misleading bits of information was that everybody that's in the green area gets their water from the Ohio River. That's not the case here in Butler County or at the City of Hamilton and at many, many, well, I'll say hundreds of other water systems in that green area. So these are actually real maps online available to the public. This was put out by, I think it was the Army Corps of Engineers, but also Orsenco, an organization that works with the Ohio River Water Systems, has a map like this. But this map shows you where all the watersheds are and how they're disconnected with one another in most cases. But they all ultimately end up emptying water into the Ohio River. Basically, there's a definition of what a watershed is. It basically sheds the water off of the upper-lying areas into the creeks and streams and ultimately into the Ohio River. I have this slide up on the right. Miami Conservancy District has this map on their, on their website. The green area on the right in that map is basically the same darker green area on the left side of that slide, that, that map. So if you can see where Cincinnati is located just to the north, that is the Great Miami watershed. So within that watershed is where our aquifer is, and that's where the blue lines are in the, on the right side of that map. So just for clarification. One thing I want to point out, I wish I had a pointer, but the, the star on the map to the left is where the East Palestine train derailment was. And of course, you see the darker green colored watershed area, which is where our watershed is, but also where our groundwater is located. So we're very, very disconnected from this event. And unfortunately for their town, they got a long, long road ahead of them for cleanup and water resource management there. So not all rain or snow that falls on the surface of the ground ends up in a watershed. Some of it goes into the ground and becomes groundwater over time. And of course, that's where we get our water supply, our drinking water supply. The Great Miami River, the Great Miami Berry Valley Aquifer supplies water to our region, to the City of Hamilton. And it's basically what's called an unconfined aquifer, meaning that there's no defining or confining layer at the shallow part of the aquifer protecting us from anything on the surface of the ground. So we do have to work hard to protect this area because it'll just leach right down into our, our water supply potentially if there's, if there's spills and releases, which I'll talk a little bit more about. So here's a basic aquifer cross-section. So our aquifer is sand and gravel, so anyone in construction services, anyone that's ever built a house in this region will know that you get down in the sand pretty quick in this area. So it's, that's part of the aquifer system. The aquifer goes about 200 feet deep. In some areas, it's, it's deep as 240. Some areas, it's as shallow as 30 feet. I'll talk a little bit about where that aquifer is, but water moves between the sand and gravel particles and ultimately ends up in our drinking water production wells from pumps and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second. So I did talk more about the Ohio River drainage basin than I wanted to. I'll talk about our aquifer and where we get our water from. The good news is we're far enough away from that incident that it will not impact us. Hamilton uses groundwater for drinking water, not surface water as our source. Hamilton's wells are waters, and our water system is a really unique system. And here are the reasons why. Hamilton owns two separate drinking water plants, both on opposite sides of town. They, they basically can back each other up. And that's, that's a good, good water system. Very few water systems have that ability to have two different water systems that are still connected. Hamilton has a really diverse well field. All their wells, most of their wells are spread out throughout the community. They're not all clustered in, like some other wellfields where you have a cluster of wells. If there's contamination, they could all be impacted. So Hamilton has different areas of the wellfield they can pump from. Hamilton has a sustainable, safe drinking water source, and they were founding members of our organization 57 years ago. So this is a general map of what our Butler County water resources look like, groundwater in particular. So where you see purple and blue on this map is where groundwater is located. Everywhere you see orange on this map is shale, bedrock, and clay, you're not going to get much groundwater from there. All of Hamilton's wells are in the purple and blue areas. That area, if you look at that map, this is kind of an older map. It's the only one that's been developed as a Butler County Water Resources map. But it says you can pump 500 or more gallons of water per minute. Most of Hamilton's wells are anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 gallons of water per minute out of one individual well. So that's why we're able to pump 62 million gallons of water every day out of the aquifer. And in a lot of cases, in the summertime, it can be over 100 million. And that's all the consortium members combined. That's how much water comes out of the aquifer. And again, I'll get into the details of the sustainability of that. It's very important that we monitor that over time. So diving in a little bit deeper, we have what are called source water protection areas, a one, a five, and a 10-year time of travel zone, the time it takes for a particle of water to move underground towards our drinking water production wells. This is all based on scientific information that we collected over the last couple of decades to understand and model this area. So we're very precise with this and it's defensible in court. We've had to use this in court a couple of times, but it's, it's good information for us to know where our most sensitive areas of the drinking water aquifer are. These are not contaminant time of travel zones. And you might have heard about the Ohio River and the Cincinnati Water Works and Orsenco calculating the time it was going to take for that water to move towards their intakes. It's the same concept, except in groundwater, it's a little bit slower because groundwater only moves about 12 inches per day, not very far, versus a river that it will take minutes or hours to get to an intake. So these are the time of travel zones depicted over top of an aerial. To give you reference, the Bob Meyer Airport is up there to the right. The water travels for miles away towards these drinking water production wells. The red in that red area is called the one-year time of travel zone. The blue is called the five-year time of travel zone, and the gray shaded area is the 10-year time of travel zone. This is the area for Fairfield and Hamilton wellfields. They're kind of interspersed amongst one another. Off to the far left is Southwest Regional Water District, their one, five, and 10-year time of travel zone. Lower left-hand corner is Greater Cincinnati Water Works Bolton Well Field, their backup water supply for their surface water system. So one of the most important components of our work includes a comprehensive monitoring program. The program's designed to provide early warning of contamination and water level information. We've collected this information over 20 years. We kind of have an idea of what's in our source water before it gets to the production wells. This is a example of what one of the smaller monitoring wells look like. It's useful for collecting groundwater samples, measuring the depth of water. Consortium wells are mostly what are called stick-up variety. I know some of you are familiar with Grismer Park on the corner of St. Clair and River Road. At that location, we have a couple of stick-up wells off to the right, and there's a little sign that talks about what those are. We also have monitoring wells in Benning Hoffen Park and other locations where we have access, to, to easy access to get to, to collect those samples. So this diagram kind of takes a cutout of the earth to show you what those monitoring wells do. Typically, we have them in a nested area, so it'll be a shallow, a medium, and a deep well together. So if we do see groundwater contamination migrating towards a production well, we'll pick it up in one of those monitoring wells and be able to shut off that production well in the event of a incident that we see. And sometimes, natural groundwater can have some contaminants in it. For the most part, most of our wells are showing up as non-detect in terms of the different types of samples we collect. So this map, again, looking over top, the blue dots that you see are the early warning monitoring wells, the smaller wells. The white dots on this map represent production wells for the City of Hamilton, Fairfield, Cincinnati Water Works. So we've strategically located these monitoring wells in, in these areas to give us an early warning of contamination towards the production wells. And this is the North Well Field area where basically the North Well Field is up by New Miami Village. You can see again, the blue areas are the monitoring wells. The white are the production wells. And they're all designed to provide us with early warning of the potential for contamination. Currently, we have 43 consortium monitoring wells throughout the region. We look at that every year to see if new wells should be added, if other wells are not useful anymore. We test for hundreds of different kinds of contaminants that potentially could be in our aquifer. We do this twice a year. Again, groundwater doesn't move very quickly. In some areas, we do it quarterly where we know there's some contamination. We evaluate surface water quality on the Great Miami River at six locations on a quarterly basis, and we try to correlate that data with the shallow wells to see if there's material coming from the river through the shallow depths of the, of the aquifer. We coordinate our efforts with Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Miami Conservancy District, and United States Geological Survey on water level information. We have access to several hundred wells throughout the community in the event of an emergency if we have to monitor water quality. So protecting groundwater quality, we monitor long-term chemical trends. We identify and eliminate potential sources of contamination. There's a frequent and consistent sampling process that we use. We basically evaluate the changes and try to deal with those changes as early as possible. We collect monthly water levels on a monthly basis, have for the past 20 years, to basically understand, you know, the pumping areas and how fast our aquifer recharges from pumping in a certain area. We get calls from time to time about drought conditions and what's happening out west with water levels dropping significantly over time because of drought. Our aquifer responds fairly quickly. We're very fortunate to have about 40 inches of rain per year recharging our aquifer. So as far, as far as contingency planning goes, even with source water protection, contamination can still occur due to leaks, spills, illegal discharges, and other activities in and around the source water protection areas. The consortium's contingency plan is over 30 pages long, identifies procedures for responding to source water protection-related emergencies in the time of travel zones. The consortium members work with Butler County EMA to plan for incidents such as train derailments. In fact, just a couple of months ago, we had a tabletop exercise up in Trenton on a train derailment. Members of the groundwater consortium have excellent working relationships with the State Agency, Ohio EPA, and first responders in the region. Members work together to identify risks around the region yearly. We meet monthly. The members are also very fortunate to have Hamilton City Council and senior staff here support the efforts to protect your drinking water. We have signs like this around the community. We'd like to put up more, but that's just my personal opinion. So there's my information. I'm happy to address any questions from council or the audience about our drinking water.
Any questions from council for Tim? I just want to say thank you for continuing to educate not just young people, because you have got the young people events, but educating us.
Yep.
Here this evening. And so the passage of time, I mean, it's going to go on for a decade of monitoring.
Or more, yes.
Or more.
Or more, yes. Yeah, it's, it's a tragedy for that community. Hopefully, they can address the contamination in the soil quick enough. If they can get, dig down deep enough where the saturated soil is with the contamination before it gets to the water table, that would be the best-case scenario. I know that there's been a lot of videos about the creeks being impacted, and yes, they are. There's been, I think, 3,500 fish counted by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources that were killed in some of the streams in the nearby area. And all of you heard about the material moving down the Ohio River at what, what is classified as low levels. But to anyone in this room, a low level means it's there, and that's a concern. It's, that makes total sense. But the type of contaminant that was in the river, was that like a five-part-per-billion? For it to be harmful to the most sensitive subpopulation, which would be a developing fetus, it would have to be about 560-part-per-billion. Even though that's all accurate, true, that stuff was still in the Ohio River, still a concern to everybody along the Ohio River. And Cincinnati Water Works did shut off their intakes just as a precaution. I can tell you that City of Hamilton, some of the other consortium members have turned off wells that are close to the Great Miami River when we hear about spills, just as a precaution. So we do have a good network of communication among all the consortium members. City of Hamilton's North Well Field would be the first impacted if there's a spill on the Great Miami River and inducing that infiltration of groundwater into the wellfield would be catastrophic. And of course, we do have some trains that roll through the town here. This could happen anywhere.
Wow, you mentioned city staff. I see John Bowie out there.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see John around too often, and I know he's working.
I know he's working. I, I wanted to make sure, I wanted to point out a great big thanks to the guys here at the water plant for coming tonight to support me. Can't say enough about where my office is, and, and I do get to interact with the water production folks down there who make your water great, best in the world. And it's amazing to me, I was thinking about this on the ride home the other night, how many resources go in to producing great water? Not just at the water plant, in the distribution system, all the engineers that work on things, senior staff, council that supports it, financial people that put together budgets. It's amazing how water works. It's not just, you know, turning on a switch and the water comes, comes out of your faucet. It's, it's not that simple, but I do appreciate the support from council and, and from all the guys at the Hamilton Water Plant. You guys have a great system.
Mr. Rair. Tim, it's been a pleasure to know you for so many years.
Oh, yeah. I love all the Tims on this side of the room.
The fact that, that the comprehensive testimony you've just given and the expert manner that you're able to deliver what you know to be true in things, because many of us have fielded those calls you mentioned earlier and people concerned because of some of the innuendo, some of the not true statements that you shared that, that were out there for people to watch and see and things like that. So again, we really appreciate your sharing so much of what you know to be true. As you said, you just kind of tapped the surface for us.
I did, yes. Happy to come back and talk about other aspects of our program, especially the education piece. October 6th, everybody write the date down, that's Children's Water Festival, and I expect Mayor Moeller to come back and make his presence. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks.
Hey, John, did you bring somebody else with you today?
Um, yeah, Jay Mosley.
Okay.
And Sharon Ritchie, I'm Mr. Assistant. Good luck, man.
Great. Thank you for what you folks do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by council? Okay. We next have Department of Structure, Department of Structure, excuse me, presentation on the GRIP grant application.
Thank you, Mayor Moeller, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. Mayor, just to give an update on the Department of GRIP grant update that the City of Hamilton's applying for. All right, a brief history. Back in 2017, the Utility Department did a study to make a business case to install AMI into our electricity system and all our metering. AMI is Advanced Meter Infrastructure. With that, we can reduce customer service costs, improve effectiveness, improve effectiveness to city customer service personnel, reduce lost revenue, enhance, enhance data collection for customers. That way, customers can see real-time information on their usage. Also, what would help us automate our outage management system and have a lot of operations, things for our system, automate to take the human factor out and just make it, make it that much quicker for us. At the time, the estimate, the study estimate was $10 million and a three-and-a-half-year payback. When we took actual bids, the actual bids came back at 17 million, and at the time, that 17 million, we could not afford. So we kind of put it on the back burner. Along with, with bipartisan infrastructure law, the Department of Energy offers a Grid Resilience and Innovation Partnership Program, the GRIP program. $10.5 billion is set aside to increase grid flexibility through transmission, for transmission, increase transmission capacity, fault prevention, AMI, integrating renewables, energy, EV infrastructure. So with this funding, they were seeking, they're searching for large projects that make a big impact on the electric system in the country. The cost share for each person was basically, they'll pay 50%. You say you're going to pay 50% of this. So it's a 50% thing. Concept papers were due January 13th this year, and to get the size of, we make a large group, 44 members with AMP submitted for this, this program to get the size they were talking about. And, and applications for the actual grant are due March 17th. Like I said earlier, AMP submitted on behalf of 44 communities, including Hamilton, for $100 million worth of grant money to install smart meter infrastructures throughout all these municipals. The concept paper was accepted by the DOE and they told, they asked them to submit a formal application. If they told you not to submit a formal application, then basically said you didn't have a chance. So we made it on to the next round. AMP requested a letter of support from, resolution from council be signed so we can keep, continue with this project. You have to have commitments from the members saying that, yes, if we get this, we will, we will pay our share. Total capital costs for just electric for the AMI system is $16.131 million. Total capital costs for just electric for the AMI system is $16.131 million. So Hamilton's share of this grant funding would be a little bit over $8 million we would get, help fund this project. We're also, besides this grant, we're also working with AMP and other agencies to find more funding to help us cover the other $8 million besides our own revenue. Just a little thing, out of 327 concept, 26 concept papers, only 157 were asked to resubmit, and they're estimating that probably only 25% of those that they asked to submit will actually get money. So it's not a guarantee, but we've still got a very good chance of getting this money. Again, this is just part of this process where you have, they sit timelapse, and we'd have to submit letters and support. Along from the initial investment for us, besides helping the electric system long-term, then we'll be able to tie in other utilities to this metering structure and automate stuff. It keeps us from having to roll a truck. If we have a meter turn on or turn off, you'll be able to do, NATO group will be able to do it from the office. So it automates all that stuff. It just saves manpower. And again, at least with the electric system, we see stuff down right now to the substation level. With, once you put AMI, you'll see everything down to the meter level, so we'll know exactly which resident and which. We don't, residents out, and when they come back on, we won't need a phone call from our person anymore, because we'll know down to each individual, which makes it a very much time-saving aspect for us. Again, for questions of the grant thing, Nate Perry can be contacted. He's our board member at AMP, and he's that. And if you need any questions about the actual utility side of the work, how it could benefit us, you could contact me. But this is just part of the process to get us some grant money, which we're looking for all over for utilities to save us money.
If we get this grant money, that's going to really change the landscape of reliability, troubleshooting, and all that.
It'll make stuff that we have to have a person push a button or do something automatic come to us. I mean, it just, it's just another big step forward for us. Some of the bigger utilities will have us already, it's just, you know, it's hard to justify spending that amount of money on us when we're so tight in other areas. So like I said, we're looking all over for grant money we can find.
Thank you for finding this one, and it's on our agenda tonight, it's a resolution on number 20. Any comments or questions by council? Thank you.
Thank you.
The one we have is a train depot relocation update by Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. It's our biweekly update on the train depot relocation. So for the single-story building, the block walls to support the building are complete. You've seen the cold weather protection flying around in the wind today. Bricklaying on the single-story building has been completed, and the next step will be the evaluation of the roof, but we will be waiting until they get all of this protection out of the way, because we need to get direct access to the roof. And we're presently coordinating with Wolf Movers to remove the steel beams. For the two-story building, the block walls are complete and ready for the building to be set. The bricklaying on the two-story building is underway, and actually, I was told today that, weather permitting, they'll be complete tomorrow, but I would say by the end of the week, they will be complete with the bricklaying. And again, we need to evaluate the roof. We need to wait until the cold weather protection's been removed, and again, we're coordinating with Wolf Movers to remove the steel beams. With the contract that was signed with Wolf Movers, there was a 90-day time period from the time the building was put in place over the foundation until they removed the steel beams. So we had that window, 90 days, to get the foundation prepared and the building ready to set on the foundation. So we're getting close to that, so I want to obviously get that done as quickly as possible so that we don't have any extra costs facing us with the extension of the steel beams within the buildings. That's the extent of my presentation tonight. Are there any questions?
If you're less informed about what the evaluation comes up with on the roof, that would be, just get it to us.
Yep.
Any questions for Rich? Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes care of our special presentations. We now go to audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda, or they can reserve the right to speak when the item is up for a vote on the council floor. All individuals who wish to speak are required to sign the blue public speaking book, and we're going to go right down the list here. I have Jim Lottman first. Lottman?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Jim Lottman here. I like, I know why, I live on Front Street now, and I was pretty, I'm going downtown New Burlington, and the streets like Fairview and Benninghoffen, where there's big potholes right in the middle, or they've been fixing for months, you know. I saw some are fixed, some of them are fixed, but not the big ones. Why is that?
I'm going to let you ask all your questions first before we give answers. Is that your only question?
No, okay, and also, I live on, I came from, let's see, from D Street, going toward Ross, you know, turn right there, you turn left, and there's this car parking, I guess, you know, and you see a white line goes to the corner here now, to the, guy parks in front of, thing at all times, and once in a while, parks in there, and you can't see the cars coming there. And I complained about that many times.
I think you mentioned that to us the last time. I'm sure there will be enforcement, if not by neighbors, by somebody in the city.
Yeah.
To answer your first question, I know we are starting to address various potholes that are on the streets. I mean, I can see they've been on Ludlow and some other streets. I expect they will get to Fairview and Benninghoffen here sometime soon.
Because you're right in the middle of the street, not in the sides, you know, you avoid them, but right in the middle, you can't avoid them, you know.
Well, I'm sure that our infrastructure department, our city manager, and Rich have got those under control, and thanks for bringing those to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Charles Atwood, come to the podium and give us your name and your address, please.
Charles Atwood, it's 65 Glen Cross Avenue in Hamilton. We have a lot of speeders on our street and also on Sunset, and we need someone to monitor that area. We've asked the police, and the police says, we need to come to city council to talk about it. Why? I don't know why we have to come to city council to get something done.
Okay. Well, no, Glen Cross, Sunset, I think, unless you've lived here for a while, know that they can be speeding on those streets.
Yes, we need, you see, a monitoring system to see, show them how fast they're going, and also to detect, to put something on there where we can see how fast they're going and that they need to be taken care of.
Is that something the city manager, we could put on the public safety list of streets to do that?
Absolutely.
Also, we have people going around school buses at that corner every morning, and school buses need a camera on the buses to take care of this.
What's the corner that they're doing that on?
Glen Cross and Sunset, that's where kids get on the bus and get off the bus. Police have been there a couple of times to monitor, but, you know, they're in plain sight. No one's going to do it then. It's when they're not there, and someone, some kid's going to get killed there.
You can have that reviewed as well. Great. Thanks for coming to council, bringing that to our attention. Mr. Pullman, did you have an answer, or did you want to say anything?
Actually, yeah, I was just going to say, I appreciate you bringing that up, but the other, I notice every morning when I go by Hamilton High right now, I actually was going to say something tonight about this, but the lack of respect for the school zones lately has just been really bad. I mean, I'm going 20 through there, and people are passing me at 55 miles an hour, and that's not the only school zone. I go through Fairfield, they do the same thing. But I said, we have an issue with that. With school buses, the school buses worry me, too. So I appreciate you bringing that up, but I have, I have, I just can't believe people are not obeying the school zones right now. I mean, that's the most important thing.
I've never seen a police officer pulling anyone over for speeding. I've been here 25 years, I've never seen a police officer pulling anybody over for speeding.
So I agree with you, we do have to do something with that, and it, you know, definitely with the schools, and that's the most important. Our kids are very important, so I appreciate you bringing that up, because I was going to bring that up in audience at council tonight, because it's actually getting a little dangerous, especially on Eaton Avenue, so.
Mr. Atwood, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and our city manager did take note of that, and there'll be something done.
I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'm going to read some names. There's Morgan Taylor here. There's a Morgan Taylor, does she wish to speak at the podium? Okay, you're one of our fine students who are here observing, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Brandon Taylor.
I'm sorry, sir, I must have signed the wrong book.
Well, you want to say something, come on up, you signed the book.
I'm doing my job, I'm all right.
Well, let's stop right there, you've said plenty, good. Emma Cornet, same thing. I'm going to thank you for being here. And can't read the last name on here, but I bet you it's a student. Is there an Osaka?
Ah, yeah. It was him.
Well, thank you all for being here and for taking notes, and if you have any ideas, you can come to the podium, too, anytime you want to, and tell us how we're doing, give us constructive criticism, whatever you want to do, okay? All right, thank you. That takes care of audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes matters such as all staff reports, caucus reports, and the January 2023 financial and investment report. We are going to go to the committee of the whole, and that's when agenda items can be presented to council, and council can ask questions in a more informal manner. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second.
Message by council member Pullman, send him a council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Mr. Clerk, we now go to the caucus agenda, and please lead us through that, if you would, please.
Absolutely. So for the first item, the first presentation, will be presented by our executive director of internal services, Mr. Tim Wortman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present on caucus item number one, which is an update to our Schedule D2 of the city's classification and compensation plan. Schedule D2 is generally the wage table for temporary and seasonal employees that we hire. This is a schedule that sometimes doesn't get as much attention as the other schedules just because it's not used as much, not as many employees are covered by it. Though this schedule was last updated comprehensively in 2019. Since that time, the Ohio minimum wage has increased, and it results in the update to the schedule being required. Some of the wage rates at the bottom end of the schedule are actually below what would be the state minimum wage at this point, so we need to correct that. And then the other thing is, as part of this cleanup, there are certain listed classifications that we no longer use. There were some classifications that were associated with the Parks Department, and as you're aware, the Parks Consortium is taking care of those at this point. So it'll be a general cleanup, and then additionally, we would be requesting an increase of a 3% across the board to the wages that are still in the scale to help with recruitment for these positions. These are, a lot of these are quick strike team positions, positions that do pretty important work, even though they are seasonal and temporary. So we would be requesting 3% across the board, deleting the ranges that are no longer in use, and the wage rates that are below minimum wage, and then deleting the obsolete job classifications, and you'll see that actually at the next meeting, and I think we're going to request that while it not be an emergency necessarily, that perhaps we do two readings so that we can get this taken care of, so we don't have the minimum wage issue sticking out there.
Any questions or comments? Great. Thank you, Tim.
Next up for agenda items two and three, we'll have our planning director, Liz Hayden.
Good evening, city council and residents of Hamilton. We have two hopefully straightforward items on your agenda tonight. The first is the vacation of South 7th Street where the proposed Future Justice Center And the other one is another similar cleanup-type proposal where we need to fix where the right-of-way is along St. Clair Avenue. Right now, there's, where the road is, is not showing is right-of-way, and through someone's yard is showing where the street goes, so we're fixing that. Any questions on these?
Questions? Thank you.
Next up for agenda item number four, we will have a presentation by our director of engineering, Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. The, there's an effort underway across the United States to identify all of the bike trails, and the Great Miami River recreational trail is part of what's called U.S. Bike Route 25. ODOT is offering to paint signage on the bike trail throughout the region, and they want to do that in 2023. This, as I said, the bike trail, recreational trail is part of the U.S. Bike Route 25. It's frequently covered by high water, and also MCD is responsible for mowing, so that limits the kind of signage used. Many trails are putting up wood posts with signs on the wood posts, but for this part of the trail, the signage will have to be painted on the pavement. ODOT will install the signage, and the city will be responsible for any future maintenance of it. This is the proposed location of the signage. There will be two locations, just north of the Columbia Bridge that's shown in the photo. It identifies where the bike trail separates where one goes, continues north to Rensselaer Forest, and the other diverts off to the Fittin Center. And this is an example of what the signage is going to look like painted on the trail. This one says Bike Route 50, but ours will say 25. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Rich, for that presentation.
Thank you.
And last on the caucus agenda will be a presentation by our finance director, Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So tonight, we're here on the second supplemental appropriation of 2023. We did the first one last meeting that was strictly for the criminal justice complex. So the first thing to note on this is, in the caucus report that actually went to you guys, we had $695,000 on a grant to the Schuler-Benninghoffen Mill. That will not appear in the legislation on March 8th. I believe that's probably going to be part of the 2024 budget process as it stands now. We had almost $1.15 million, or we're going to propose almost $1.15 million for our police department retention payment program. That salary is completely reimbursed from the state ARPA funds. And then we have $410,000 for the Community Improvement Corporation for property acquisition and the upper-floor residential rehab program. Now of that, there's $30K that's actually going to go to the Parks Conservancy for Lindenwall Baseball, so it's going to be 380 to the Community Improvement Corps and 30K to the Parks. A totally separate fund is the Hamilton Cap and Debt Fund. That's the general funds capital and debt fund, but it is completely separate from the general fund. And we have the bond anticipation notes, the OMAP program that you guys authorized back in December of 2022. We issued that note of that $2.5 million. We're doing the Rivers Edge Roof at $1.75 million, and we're doing some gas and waterline relocation where Station 26 is going to be, Fire Station 26 is going to be. And we're also going to purchase a And we're also going to purchase a, uh, new bucket truck for the signal shop at $220,000. The infrastructure renewal program, we have a half million dollar payment, it's for the Butler County engineer for, uh, work performed on Tylersville Road. Uh, that's also proceeds from that ban that we issued through the OMAP program. Uh, we're going to fully appropriate the 3.95 million for Fire Station 26, that's, uh, funded through our ARPA funds that we received. We've, uh, fully funded the money in a separate fund for that, you guys are just going to hopefully appropriate that at the next meeting. And the Water Capital Improvement Fund, we got $350,000, that's the, uh, water utility share for, uh, the Third Eye Brewing Project. Guys, have any questions?
I have a single question. Um, can you go back one slide, please? You had, uh, under general fund, the third bullet point, uh, the last sentence, the $30,000 to Parks Conservancy for Lindenwall Baseball. Uh, I think there was also a request from $30,000 for East Side Little League at Crawford Woods. Uh, if council wished to amend this, to add that additional $30,000 for the East Side Little League, um, can they do it now, or do they have to wait?
So this is not the legislation, we could certainly add that in the legislation, I'll defer to the law director, but.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, we can get that for the ordinance for next council meeting, if that's will of council, but it'd be good to get that direction tonight.
Well, I would, I mean, council certainly can vote it, or not approve it, but I, I think if the intent was to put it in there for this one.
I, I have been contacted by, by both of those leagues, and I think other members of council have been contacted by both leagues for, for some common sense improvements to, uh, their operations, so I just know that they would appreciate that, both, and, um, they're within our parks, so I just think that it's very well thought out investment to keep those leagues looking good and safe.
So just so I'm clear, we're doing 60,000 total?
Thirty to each would be appropriate. Yeah. We could do that, I, I, that, that shows some, you know, assistance to them. We could do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So the 30,000 would go to the Parks Conservancy to distribute?
Well, I, I believe it's going to go to the Parks Conservancy, and then to Lindenwall Baseball, I guess they would be, would it be, would they be submitting some of their requests of what they wanted, and how to spend that $30,000?
Yeah, I think to answer Councilperson Fear's question, yes, we would run the 30,000 for each little league through the Parks Conservancy, and they would, uh, reimburse based on receipts they receive for the improvements.
Okay.
I do know that Lindenwall Baseball does have a, a list of items, and, uh, it's, it's really well thought out and needed.
Yep.
So, uh, and I know the city's actually assisting them by putting, uh, uh, one of those, um, speed bump type things on the field, it's, it's closest to the street on Joe Nuxhall Way, so there's already things taking place, uh, to assist, um, Lindenwall Baseball, and I hope also East Hamilton, uh, baseball.
Yeah, we'll put that in the legislation.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just one additional question. So were there estimates given on this, or is this just a contribution to what they want to do?
Speaking from Lindenwall Baseball, they had a list of, of items and dollar figures next to it.
Okay, and then for East End, this will go toward whatever they want to do, but it would cap at 30,000 if it were to exceed that, is what we're saying.
Correct, we will make the contribution to the parks.
Correct.
I had not seen East Hamilton's list, but, but, um, their administration has contacted me, and I forwarded it to, uh, the city manager, and, uh, that might be treated a little bit different, because I've not seen their list, but I know the city has seen Lindenwall's list, um, and, uh, very appropriate, very well thought out, and just going to say very needed.
I'll get in touch with Adam Cornet at, uh, Parks, and make sure he monitors that, and.
That'd be great if you have somebody monitor it.
Well, Dave, I mean, I think, I think we should take it maybe one step further. I, I think that the funds from the city, as we talked about with Lindenwall Little League, should really go towards safety enhancements at the parks, uh, no different than the East Side. What I would like is, when we come back in two weeks, to actually have those estimates, and, you know, the sources of the money, obviously we know, it's the uses of the money that I think we need to clarify.
Mr. Mayor?
Just going to ask that, yeah.
Do we, do these two parks have like a master plan or something together, and that they, we can see what, what their ultimate goal is, instead of just kind of filling in spaces?
I'm, I'm just going to, they don't have a master plan that I'm aware of, but their plan is for things like, uh, netting, uh, on the backstops, and, uh, uh, first aid kits, and things like that. I mean, it is, it's not two technical items, it's, it's pretty much needs for baseball to make it safe.
I think Lindenwall also requested a defibrillator, which is required.
They did.
For them to have their program.
And I tell you what, that just makes, with, with what happened with DeMar, and some of the stories that I've heard recently on TV by like a 12-year-old, nobody in the league knew how to handle the situation. Uh, yeah, and the defibrillators, I believe, cost $1,500, and they will talk back to you how to do CPR.
Right.
So it's an audio, I mean, every league should have one, I, I, I'm not kidding, so, and if that's 1,500 of the 30,000, that's pretty well spent. Uh, I guess you have to have some kind of system to make sure it got taken home, instead of maybe left there every, 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 uh, at night when they're not playing, but, uh, I think that would be something which probably should be automatic on their $30,000. That's just my opinion, Lindenwall did request that.
Um, just, I apologize, just one more, I mean, clarification again for Councilperson Fear. I think both the requests that I have seen is not necessarily, um, they're not enlarging or trying to like improve upon what they have in terms of more fields or more amenities. Most of the requests are simply just, I would call deferred maintenance.
Okay.
It's, and I would call it even further deferred safety maintenance.
Okay.
Uh, but again, I, but it's a good question, and we should have the uses of all those funds as part of the presentation in two weeks.
Yeah, because I know a lot of times we do ask for like the receipts and follow-up, just like to Pat's point, who's taking this equipment home with them? Is it going to be in storage? Because once one park starts acting, or asking, we should be able to help all parks.
Mr. Mayor?
Pullman?
Um, on East Hamilton, I used to be, um, president of Challenger Baseball, they're a special needs league over there. Um, and I, I have to let everybody know that most of the leagues, they, they fund their own equipment, and they're, like, we got grants and everything for the field, so I'm hopefully, I, I want to see the list, which is good, because I know one thing with East Hamilton, that I hope they do put on the list, is the road going into it, there's a very narrow, um, pass over the creek, and that's actually, it's so, getting so narrow now that it's hard for even an ambulance to come in there. So, um, it's, it's eroded in a way, so I'm hoping they're going to put it towards stuff like that, and that's why I would like to see a list, because, um, they've done a lot of good things over there at East Hamilton, so I, I'm glad we are giving money there.
I can, I can contact the individual who sent me the text yesterday, and just say that we need a list immediately.
Yeah.
Lindenwall's already got the list, and I think I've got it in my emails or texts, or maybe, uh, somebody in the city manager's office has that, but this is not for baseballs and gloves.
Right, and I, I think everybody should know that, that we're not giving money for that, because most of the, when I was in charge of the league, we fundraised that ourselves, and the same thing they do over, uh, East Hamilton, I know they do in Lindenwall, but I know, I think all this money should go toward the improvements of, like, the roads, and maybe the speed bumps, the defibs and all that stuff, I, I, I agree with that, but that's why I would like to see a list, too.
Matter of fact, the list, and then it will come in, we'll be interested to compare that list with, with Crawford, with the, uh, Jim Tracy Field Crawford, with East Hamilton, to see if they got also some of the backstop issues and those other, other type issues.
We could have it in our packet next time, that would be really helpful to look at in advance.
I can attach it to the staff report.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Please.
The, uh, East Hamilton, um, facility has been upgraded by some individuals over there, and it's an absolute gem of a facility, and I would encourage anybody to go visit it, it is an absolute gem, the, the gentleman there has done a great job of maintaining it, and has, and has spent money very responsibly, so I would support that.
Maybe he could come and make a presentation, that'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, they did a great job.
It's been done.
Let's get the lists and go from there, but I know Lindenwall's list is, they definitely need it. I'll get the list from, from, uh, Crawford Woods, East Hamilton, and I'll send that to you folks, and, and they got to get the list, and it'll come to council, and we'll be able to look at that probably the Friday before the council meeting, and we can go from there.
Okay, I mean, if you need me to do anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
All right, so that is the summation of our reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion, the committee of the whole be closed?
So moved.
Second. Motion by council member Nab, second by coun, oh, excuse me, vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, it is 7 o'clock, and if we went in to, we have the whole around 6:30. Uh, I'll set the motion, the regular meeting be reconvened?
So moved.
Second. Motion by council member Fear, second by vice mayor Ryan. Roll call, reconvene, the regular meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
I'll set the motion, um, regarding the reports on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that, with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur with the recommendations.
Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, second by council member Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll set the motion on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation, agenda item number six, second reading of an ordinance involving, uh, service charges for fire protection.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending section 939.01 raids to include fire protection charges and repealing section 939.13 annual service charge for unmetered water used for fire protection of chapter 939 water to provide clarity to consumers of the city with waterworks system, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Pullman. Any discussion or comments on this particular agenda item? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda, agenda item number seven, second reading of an ordinance involving, uh, property of 1,000 Maple Avenue.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances, and related actions related to certain real property located at 1,000 Maple Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. City of Hamilton seller, Three Strands 412 LLC purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Nab, second by vice mayor Ryan. Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Good to agenda item number eight, um, second reading of an emergency ordinance involving a sale and purchase agreement, related actions involving 17, well, property on South Erie Boulevard.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 1796 South Erie Boulevard and 1990 South Erie Boulevard, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. City of Hamilton purchaser, the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, seller, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, second by council member Vaughn. Comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Good to agenda item number nine, second reading of an emergency ordinance involving a compensation plan, including a new classification code compliance officer two.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14th, 2022, by creating the new classification of code compliance officer two, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 10, second reading of an ordinance involving vacating a portion of the right of way, South Monument Avenue.
An ordinance to vacating a portion of right of way named South Monument Avenue located between High Street and Core Street situated in the second ward, city of Hamilton, Ohio, city of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, second by council member Nab. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Can we just have a reminder of when that's going to be closed, so the public knows? I assume there'll be signage.
Great question.
Um, Mr. Engel, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was scheduled for May, uh, sometime in May, but we'll certainly put out a, a ton of notices before then, and I think, uh, there was a plan to actually sign it, was it in March or April, just to give people a heads up?
Probably 30 days ahead of it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Now go to new legislation, agenda item number 11, uh, emergency ordinance involving the CIC and property located at 10 Millville Avenue.
An emergency ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, CIC, 10 Millville Avenue, first reading.
Thank you. Good to agenda item number 12, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving a sale and purchase agreement, related actions involving property 319 North Erie Boulevard, Hamilton.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at three nineteen North Erie Boulevard, Hamilton, Ohio, four five zero one, parcel number P six four three one zero three six zero 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 five four, City of Hamilton, purchaser, Anthony Hicks, seller, first reading.
Here we go to agenda item number thirteen, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving easements in the Tyresville Road project.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of two permanent utility easements and two temporary easements located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, two four nine one Tyresville Road and two nine four nine Tyresville Road, Judy A Brewer, property owner, City of Hamilton, Ohio, purchaser, first reading.
Thank you, agenda item number fourteen, as a resolution involving a land bank program and demolition.
A resolution approving a limited delegation of nuisance abatement and assessment authority to the Butler County Land Reutilization Corporation land bank pursuant to the Ohio Department of Development's building demolition and site revitalization program.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number fifteen, resolution involving safe routes to school program, looks to be in the Crawford Woods Elementary School area.
A resolution authorizing, directing, and supporting the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Transportation's ODOT Safe Route to Schools program for infilling sidewalks and installing ADA compliant curb ramps, crosswalks, signage, and signals where none currently exist along Hancock Avenue, Parish Avenue, and Hensley Avenue adjacent to Crawford Woods Elementary School and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Pullman. Comments, questions? I was gonna say the city's gotten these safe route to school grants in the past, and we've done a really good job with them, and just really appreciate the fact that we file the grants, we get them, and we do the right things with them. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number sixteen, resolution involving our side lot program in ten fourteen South Second Street.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to adjoining property owner as a side lot, one zero one four South Second Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Here we go to agenda item number seventeen, which is also a side lot program resolution and involves ten thirty Hensley Avenue.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, ten thirty Hensley Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Pullman. Discussion or comments on this? Another good use of a side lot, roll call vote please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number eighteen, a resolution involving a grant application and the demolition of the South G Street Bridge.
A resolution authorizing, directing, and supporting the filing of a grant application to the municipal bridge program and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds for the demolition of the South G Street Bridge.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman?
Take a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Can I just ask one que- a resident asked me, could this have been saved to be a pedestrian bridge? And I saw the pictures, and it looked pretty crumbly, but I wanted to ask before we voted. It could not, I see Rich Engel shaking his head. Okay, so it was more, they had asked about biking and pedestrian, so, thank you.
Question, any other questions or comments about this? Roll call please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Hi, I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask, I apologize, should I, should have asked this question a minute earlier? When you said that it needs to be raised to provide clearance to C S X? Forget C S X for a moment, could, I mean, I think the question was, could the South G Street Bridge be saved?
It's over a hundred years old, I don't think that.
For pedestrian use.
My, as, Rich, as you're very well aware, my concern with the removal of the South G Street Bridge is that it's going to allow more train traffic, and we already have a lot of crossings in Hamilton that are very busy, and if, if they start running more east-west trains, I know that, I think you provided an email where C S X said that was not going to happen, but by removing this impediment, it certainly could happen at some point in the future because plans always change. But my concern is that if it comes down, if there's any way to leave it in place and to make it an amenity, I certainly, I think, would be in favor of that.
We have to have a study done like that. I thought it was studied before and determined that it could not be.
Can we just at least review that and see if that is the case, and then maybe bring it, well, I guess we already voted, didn't we?
Well, that, that was just for the grant application.
That's just for the application.
Okay, I, then maybe we come back in two weeks with a, a more detailed report on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
But didn't C S X already dig down a couple of feet so they have clearance for the double stacks and the car carriers right now? They did that on D Street and G Street, I thought.
Well, they did lower the tracks, but it doesn't give them the clearance for the double deckers, it gave them the clearance for those, uh.
We're gonna.
Trains that there is, uh, cars that they use to convey the vehicles.
Yeah, the car carriers and then the.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mayor, members of council, if we're gonna continue this conversation, can Rich be on the microphone, please?
Rich, if you'll come up with a microphone, I think Vice Mayor Ryan's got a couple of questions too.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I asked this very question, Edwin, and he, he got a response for me from, from Rusty Edwin, could, could you, and Rich, maybe explain what I was asking as well, I think that's gonna be important information. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, did you have a question as well?
Edwin's more or less just gonna take care of, I mean, I'm asking the same question Eric was, was asking, so.
Yeah, so we reached out to C S X to talk about this very thing, and they said that they do have clearance to run the double stacks, what they can't do right now is the car carriers, and so they, they divert the car carriers, they, they run north, and then they bring them, so they still bring them through Hamilton, but it's on the north-south line as opposed to east-west line, so even if this obstruction were removed, there are other obstructions such as D Street, which would still obstruct those, uh, car carriers from being able to come on the east-west line, but if, if all obstructions were removed, then it's no net additional train traffic through the city, in lieu of that traffic coming on the north-south line, it would come on the east-west line, so that, that train traffic still is all destined for what they call the Queens Gate, which is in Cincinnati, and so, so the, the net, there would be no net increase, it would just be a change in which line they come through the city, Hamilton.
For C S X.
For C S X.
But you're also, you're saying that they could bring double, if everything was removed, they could run the double stacks, the car carriers through it?
They can run the double stacks now, east-west, they cannot run the car carriers.
Car carriers are definitely higher.
Yeah, so they, there, there's a number of obstructions, G Street Bridge is one, D Street Bridge is another, there's a third one.
Out towards Stoll, no, it's out further, isn't it?
I believe it's out further, so they can't do it now, removal of this bridge will not allow them to do it immediately, but sometime in the future, it may be possible for them to change that, that traffic, and so right now, it's less efficient because they still come from the west, they divert to the north, and they come back on the south line, so then they would just come from the west and continue east and then south to Queens Gate.
Because they would travel, they would travel from going up the Indianapolis line up, up, up north, right?
That's right, yeah, I believe they go to Sydney and Toledo currently to come back down through Hamilton as opposed to.
So being a train guy, if you run double stacks and you run car carriers and they have access, and they're running longer trains at thirteen thousand feet, you're gonna have, instead of two or three engines running through the neighborhood, you, and if you have seen this now, they'll, they'll run three or four locomotives up front, one in the middle, because they're pulling such a long train, and you're going up a, a grade of about three percent going up that way, so when you go up that grade, the neighbors are gonna hear that noise, it'll rock your house a little bit, but you'll start getting, you know, the power up on those going up that grade, so if they start pulling double stacks and car carriers up there, then we're going to hear a lot more noise, so then that, back to the G Street Bridge, if it's in good shape to make it a pedestrian, we could slow that down a little bit for a while, correct? Possibly?
So, so I, I don't know the background of the G Street Bridge being converted to a pedestrian.
G Street, G Street, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have to look into it and see what existing studies there are and what it would take to convert that to a pedestrian bridge, which would allow safe pedestrian crossings.
Okay. Because are they gonna put a, are they gonna put a crossing there if they take the bridge out?
No. If they take the bridge out, essentially, they would deadend either street, and they would put a turnaround on either street, and there'd just be no crossing at that point.
But you'll have a street that deadends into the railroad tracks and people are gonna be crossing it anyway.
I don't think so, because the grade, the difference in the grade, so you'd have the street would deadend to the railroad tracks, and there would be a turnaround in that location, and on the west side, there would be a street that would deadend, they would.
I'm talking about people walking across it, which is illegal anyway, but that's, I'm sure they're doing it anyway, but it may be a little bit more, I saw, now I'm thinking it's a lot more discussion needs to be brought up about this.
Well, Eric, if you look at it, it curves and goes up.
Right.
So, you would have to climb down and across the tracks.
No, I understand, if you took the bridge out, though, people, you're gonna have a road that deadends there, people can still walk just right across the tracks, you're gonna have a level area, correct? That's what I'm worried about also, if, you know, people, people cross the tracks, I mean, we know that all the time, they do that, but it, does it leave it more open for people cutting across on foot traffic?
So, I would suggest they're doing that now.
Yeah.
Uh, because they're not using the bridge, so if, if there's evidence of pedestrian crossing, which is illegal, that's, that's another matter altogether, but Joshua, thank you for saying, we'll come back with the study, and we can take a look at the, the eventuality of what the average may or may not be.
I have one last question. The grant application that is, that we're requesting, is that through the state of Ohio?
It is.
That's the one that it was gonna pay, was it ninety or ninety-five percent?
Ninety-five percent of the cost.
And if we had a conversation with C S X, I'm just curious if they would pick up the remaining five percent, because they're the primary beneficiary of the removal?
Yeah, we've asked them that, they responded, and they asked, they asked additional details on the project, they wanted some clarifications because currently the project extends off of C S X property, and so there's, there's a blend of property, so they asked some clarifying questions regarding some updates to the projects, and so they, they didn't immediately respond to a contribution towards the project because they're waiting on responses on several questions.
It, it wasn't that many years ago that C S X sent a delegation up from Jacksonville, Florida to meet with us, and this was very high on their list for removal, and they were trying to offer us things in exchange for the allowing of the, the demolition of the G Street viaduct, but also the D Street, cul-de-sac-ing the D Street Bridge, so they could get more train traffic through, and when we asked them, it was a significant amount of train traffic, so my concern is, I'm not saying that what you're saying is inaccurate, what they told you, but things can change, and it's difficult to get through Hamilton already with train traffic going north and south, if we add substantial more east-west train traffic, you literally could have gridlock inside the downtown, that's, that's my primary concern.
Understood.
Without adding more overpasses or underpasses.
And of course, I'm, I'm kinda concerned about why we're paying that five percent, if it's gonna benefit them to such a great degree. So there's a lot, apparently there's more questions than we need answered than kind of what we thought, so I thought this has been a good conversation, I'm not sure who did the staff report, I don't recall, but the staff report did have some ratings, I believe, within it. Had some ratings in it, threes and fours instead of like higher numbers or something like that, so I, I think it needs to be looked at at least a little bit more. Thank you everybody for the conversation.
Thank you.
That answer everybody's questions if they may have it, at this point in time?
Yes.
Okay, so we can move on?
Yes.
You know what we're doing?
And we will put this on hold, is that correct?
We're getting more information.
More information.
Okay.
We're still applying for the grant, is all we're doing right now.
Yeah, I think we can apply for the grant, but if we are awarded the grant, does not mean, mean we have to accept the grant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we go to agenda item number nineteen, resolution involving the Raze Grant Program.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raze Grant Program and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman?
Take a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear, any questions or comments on this one? I believe this is for North Hamilton Crossing Design Expenses, is that correct? If there's no other questions or comments, roll call vote on agenda item number nineteen, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Now go to agenda item number twenty, resolution involving the program that I believe was discussed earlier by Bill Hudson from our electric department.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a commitment letter relating to American Municipal Power Incorporated's grant application for the smart grid using edge computing to build grid resiliency project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Audience of city manager.
Thank you, I got a, a few quick things I would like to talk about. One, just going back to that G Street viaduct, I probably owe Edwin an apology, I'm just reading through some emails now, and went back to one from late last year between him and Rich and Alan and myself. Just to maybe paraphrase quickly, Alan was saying that the structure was closed in two thousand eight, prior to closing it, the city looked at the possibility of rehabilitating, replacing it, and did not pursue either because of the significant cost and impact on the neighborhood and the low utilization, either option requires that the clearance be increased to meet today's standards. Uh, this is the only bridge in ODOT District Eight that qualifies for the funding that was the resolution for this evening, I think the city would have a very good chance of getting funded, ODOT also covers the cost of the engineering, so the city portion would be, he said, assuming a one million dollar demolition cost, about fifty thousand dollars. This one did slip by me on the agenda tonight, I apologize, that's my fault, not Edwin's, but, but we will certainly dig around and bring some more information back in two weeks on this item. A couple of other things. First, maybe some good news, Starbucks should open the twenty-seventh of February, and Panda Express later that week on Thursday, March second, if things hold true, so I know I've, I've been getting a lot of questions, especially from the high school crowd when I see them, when Panda Express is open. They're very happy right now in the back row. Listen, I want to see a raise of hands, who is more excited for Panda Express or Starbucks?
Starbucks.
Oh, you break my heart, True West is my favorite, but, uh, anyway, I am excited about Panda Express, I do like the orange chicken there, but.
Everybody loves the orange chicken.
So, a couple of other things, since we're talking some development items, Ross Hill Flats, I received an email from the owner earlier saying that the, the brick should start going up on the project, sounds like in the next week or so, weather permitting, so it'll be exciting, and that project is really moving along nicely, the Anthony Wayne, which is gonna be the new Hilton Hotel downtown, they've performed quite a bit of demolition already, I spoke with the, the developers on that project earlier in the week, they have a historic tax credit application that goes in, in March, for state and federal historic tax credits, and assuming all goes well there, we'll see them under full construction, probably late spring, and they're targeting a, a summer of two thousand twenty-four opening, and again, that includes fifty-four hotel rooms and also a, a full-service restaurant, that will be where the former Hamilton Welcome Center was located. Agave and Rye has submitted plans, so once planning and engineering review those plans, they're gonna, you'll, council will have an action item, which will be the subdivision of the property, or the division, or actually putting the properties back together, where the, the karate studio is located and the, the former fueling station site, Ritzies, those will be combined into a single parcel, and then the parking plan will go around that, again, fingers crossed, but it sounds like things are really moving on that project now, and hopefully to see some summer construction on that. Also, I had a meeting in Fairfield, so I came back up Route Four, and I typically get off before I go all the way to High Street on Route Four, but I stayed on it, and, and the one thing that caught my attention is the, it looks like the First Financial Bank branch that was constructed is either done or very close to being done, Gold Star has, looks like a pretty major rehabilitation of that store in front of the East Side Kroger underway, there was a full construction crew working on Third Eye Brewing, the former Pepsi bottling facility, it was just nice to see, then, you know, when you go further north and you see the finished Starbucks, it's just nice to see the construction and the activity, I know people for a long time said, it seems like we focus only on high and main streets, but to see activity right now on Linden Wall and also on Route Four, and, you know, the far west side of Main Street, it's just, it's just nice to see the activity picking up. That's it, thank you.
Audience of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman?
And I brought this up earlier when they, just two things, I, and I guess I'm just asking everybody to be considerate on this, first of all, the school zones, I, I have been concerned with this a lot lately, and now that I'm kind of partially employed again and get out in the road, I, I, even in Fairfield and other towns that I'm in, I can't believe that people are just buzzing through these school zones. I just ask everybody to please, you know, watch our kids as you're going through these school zones, you know, fifty-five is not a good speed, I mean, the guy passed me this morning, and as I pulled out of Taff Place on Eaton Avenue, and I went twenty miles an hour, and this guy went by me about fifty-five miles an hour, I mean, he just buzzed by me, and I, I'm seeing this a lot lately, and it, it does concern me. The other thing is, I ask everybody, we're gonna be very busy on Main Street, High Street stuff, and we got parallel parking, and I, I saw a post on this, I think, from Dan Bates one time, and the, my wife is pretty good parallel, she taught me how to parallel park, in fact, she's very good, because I was terrible at it, but we went to Billy Yanks last night, and it, it took about, we had people beeping the horn as she was trying, and she can get in a spot quick.